Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, to order. At this time, we will begin with prayer. Alderman Jones, would you like to lead us?
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you tonight for your grace, your love, and your mercy. We thank you for your divine favor that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us tonight. Lord, we ask tonight that you would bless each and everyone under the sound of my voice. Watch over our mayor, his family, all of the City Council members, and all of the first responders that do such an awesome job. We ask of God tonight that you would bless our new president, give him wisdom and insight as he leads this nation. Oh, God bless him with all that he needs for his administration to do what is right by the people. We ask of God this tonight, as we do the work of the business of the city, that we use wisdom and insight that would be pleasing in your sight. You are our God and our Redeemer. I say amen.
The City Council will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to item four, and that is public comment. We have no one signed up for comment tonight. We'll move on to item five, roll call. City Council?
Jones.
President.
Noble.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Nivares.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tally.
Here.
Osinga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lilla Marshall.
Rude.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum. Next, roll call, department heads.
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwear.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Pigash. Nelson.
Beasley.
Here.
King.
Here.
Roswell.
Brewer Watson.
Here. Thank you.
Next is item six, is there a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, January 6th, 2025? So move, Mayor Curtis. We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll make that second.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Minutes for Monday, January 6th, 2025 are approved. Item seven, petitions, we have none tonight. We'll move on to item eight, communications, item 8A.
A presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing Melvina Calvin Edwards on her promotion to sergeant.
Chief Kidwell.
Come on up here, Melvina. You're front and center tonight. So, tonight I want to congratulate Melvina on her promotion to sergeant. Melvina was hired in 2005. She was the first African-American female that the police department hired. It was a major milestone for us then, great accomplishment for Melvina. Here we are nineteen years later, and Melvina is the first African-American female to be promoted to the rank of sergeant.
All right.
Another great milestone for us and another great accomplishment for you. Melvina is the epitome of community-oriented policing. She's really dedicated her entire career to police, uh, community policing. She's built tremendous inroads into the community for us. She's also the first of many, uh, first to get a doctorate degree while working as a police officer. She's two-time recipient of the Paragon Award for her investment, uh, or dedication to law enforcement through lifelong learning. She's also the, uh, program coordinator now at KCC. She oversees the entire law enforcement program. She was also a assistant professor out there, or a professor, I should say, for nineteen years. She sits on a couple of local boards, both Harbor House, YWCA, I could go on and on. She's a field training officer, she's a school resource officer, she's a juvenile officer there, but I think one of the most notable and rewarding things she does is when she puts on that, um, safety pup costume. She really does make tremendous inroads with the kids.
Awesome.
Melvina is truly an inspiration to so many, not only in our family, but in the entire community. I think everybody's in awe of your accomplishments, so congratulations, I'm very proud of you. I know the entire department's very proud of you, and, uh, I wish you the very best in your new position.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, good job.
All right, Melvina. Item B, we have a presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing Todd Kerner on his promotion to sergeant.
All right.
Uh, it's your turn. So, Todd, he, he got promoted to sergeant last week also. Todd started here in 2017, prior to us hiring him, he was a correctional officer at the Drumcomb Detention Center, so he currently has over ten years of law enforcement experience. He spent his first five years in the Patrol Division, he was a field training officer, he's also a member of the Elias Field Force team. And his last three years, he's spent in the Investigations Bureau, where he really found his footing and did a fabulous job. He a good communicator, um, very good investigator, does diligent work, and he's always been a leader amongst his peers, and I think he's going to do a great job as a supervisor. He also has some big shoes to fill because his late grandfather was very accomplished here and achieved the rank of major, so I know he's probably looking on you very proud right now, just as we all are, so congratulations, Todd.
All right. I'm coming in hot. Item C, we have a presentation by the Kankakee Police Department recognizing Tim Klopp on his promotion to lieutenant and patrol commander.
All right.
So, I did something unique with Tim. Um, Tim's been with us since 1996, he's got twenty-nine years on as a, uh, police officer here. Um, he got promoted to lieutenant, and I immediately appointed him as the patrol commander. Um, he's been in Patrol Division twenty-three years, he was in Investigations three years, he was the accreditation manager for a short time, and most recently, he's been my training sergeant, and he's really done a fabulous job. When, uh, the Safety Act was enacted, we had to, you know, we had a lot of training mandates, and, um, Tim was put in charge of that, he's brought us into compliance, he's kept us into compliance, and it's not an easy task. He's actually wrote the curriculum for almost all of our training, which has to go back to the Illinois Training Standard Boards, and then they approve it, and, uh, then they send it back to us. Tim also had the discernment to realize that we're going to need training, uh, officers, so he sent the guys out to get the training, so most of our training's in-house. I couldn't ask for more. He's also, um, been a member of the Elias Field Force team for seventeen years, he was on their command staff, he was a field training officer here, he overseen our field training program. He's actually going to get double duty now because he's going to continue doing the training until I find someone else to do it, and he's going to oversee, uh, the Patrol Division. So, I look forward to working with Tim and the command staff, I know that he's going to do a very good job, he's very detail-oriented, and I've got, uh, high respect for him, so
times for us here at the city.
congratulations to him.
Next, we'll move on to item nine, standing committees, item 9A.
Budget for Monday, December 9th, 2024.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Uh, the Budget Committee met on Monday, December 9th, and, uh, we first focused on the presentation regarding the, uh, tax levy. Um, we rearranged the agenda, and Councilor Rogers began presenting regarding the tax levy and noted three important things that characterize this year's levy. Number one, that there was a total EAV, uh, equalized assessed valuation of total property within the city of twenty-five million, which is a significant increase from last year. Uh, secondly, that allows the city to collect more money at a lower rate. And thirdly, that Lauderbach and Amen had just recently, at that point, come back with a much lower police pension and fire pension payment due, uh, for this coming fiscal year as a result of the recent issuance of the pension obligation bonds earlier last year. Uh, so the combination of all those things, uh, Councilor Rogers reported would result in a point-three-six percent reduction in the City of Kankakee property tax, tax from the prior year. Um, and Councilor Rogers also noted that the city will continue to self-fund capital expenses this year. Um, Mayor Curtis then reported that, uh, from a historical perspective, the city's property tax rate in 2017, before the implementation of the two percent sales tax, was approximately eight-point-three percent, and now in 2025, that rate will be approximately four-point-three-two percent, almost a forty-eight percent reduction in that, uh, eight-year period. Um, and saving, of course, that, what that really means is saving city property taxpayers millions of dollars over that time. Uh, also, the mayor noted that it makes the City of Kankakee much more competitive property tax-wise with our neighbors as we compete for economic development opportunities. Uh, in response to a question from Alderman Jones, Mayor Curtis noted that, uh, people sometimes say that their taxes are still going up and ask why if the city's rate is going down. Uh, he noted that, the mayor noted that it's partly due to property values increasing, and secondly, that the city can only control its own rate, it cannot control what other taxing bodies may do, um, so it may be driven up by increased value as well as other rate, other taxing bodies' rates increasing. Uh, at that point, the committee voted to recommend the levy as presented to the full council at its next meeting. Uh, and at that point, Councilor Rogers did her monthly financial statement review, uh, noting that there was not much out of the ordinary, except that we expect five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more in ambulance fees will be received later this fiscal year, because more of a timing issue. And she, Councilor Rogers, also noted that the city's cash balances are high at that point due to the influx of the pension obligation bonds, which had not yet entirely gone out to be invested with the state. Uh, and finally, uh, ECDA Director Brewer Watson presented a review of the new policy and procedures to accept federal grant funds. She noted that we had a lot of these procedures and policies in place, but in all different sections of the city municipal code, this would bring it all, all those necessary items into one ordinance so that HUD could have what they need in one spot. Um, ultimately, the council discussed this and recommended to the full, or the committee discussed it, recommended to the full council to approve the new policies and procedures. And we adjourned, uh, shortly thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Next is item 9B.
Community Development for Monday, January 6th, 2025.
Alderman Barron.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did meet on January 6th, first Monday of the month, at 6:00 PM. At the committee, at the Community Development Committee meeting, we heard a presentation from Mariah Vale, uh, who is the Executive Director of the United Way for Kankakee and Iroquois Counties. Uh, you may recall, last year, the United Way did their first day of action, we had seven different service projects going on throughout the city on the same day. Uh, they are doing it again, they're doing it a little bit earlier this year, it will happen on Earth Day, uh, which is April 22nd. Mariah asked that all the older people think of, uh, another project for this year. Um, since it's happening a little earlier, we have to be, um, a little more responsive in getting back to with our ideas. She asked that by the next Community Development Meeting, that, uh, each set of older people have an idea, um, for what they would want to do. Last year, I think most, uh, most wards did a cleanup day, um, but she encouraged folks to be creative. Um, they are seeking scholarship, or, excuse me, sponsorships this year in case we want to do something even more creative that might cost a little bit of money. Um, so if you have ideas, those will be presented at the next Community Development Committee meeting. Uh, Barbie Brewer Watson presented the ECDA report. Um, just, just to give you a sense of the wait lists that ECDA works with, on the lead, the hazard, lead hazard grant application, there are currently ninety-four households on that wait list, and on the non-led wait list, there are two-hundred-and-thirty-five households on the wait list. Um, so that is, that's the number of people that we are working with to try to provide services for. Ms. Watson also noted to the committee that the goal for ECDA is to complete five projects per month. Um, that's something she's going to report back to our committee, uh, each, each month that we do have a meeting. We spoke about the public service program. Um, as you may recall, in order to apply for public service dollars, nonprofit organizations had to attend an orientation at the end of last year. Um, at, as of this point, eleven organizations attended and submitted a letter of intent to apply. So we will be going through some of those applications coming up. Uh, also, uh, we also reported that the Partnership for a Healthy Community, which is the, uh, health, a lot of health providers within the community, held their initial, um, meeting of the 2025 year that focused on social determinants of health. Um, that was on January 15th, but they'll meet, be meeting again regularly. All older people are, uh, invited to attend that and hear what, uh, the county-wide response is to some of these social determinants of health.
Thank you, Alderman Barron. Next is item, item 9C.
Public Safety for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025.
Alderman Osinga.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday, January the 7th, at 5:30 PM. We did have a quorum present, uh, we had no public comments at our meeting, we had no new business. We went right into new business, uh, with our monthly stats for December. Chief Kidwell and Deputy Chief Austin were present for the Police Department. Department's currently fully staffed at sixty-seven officers, but no sooner do we get fully staffed, Commander Malendine retired. Uh, there are ten candidates on the hiring list, and there are three in recruits in sixty-week training classes. Uh, there are another nineteen weapons taken off the street in the month of December, ten by Patrol and nine by KMEG officers. Our Berakada cameras are working well, we have approximately a hundred-and-seventy-five of those, and we now have LEADS capabilities, which gives the officers the ability to run license, the information on the LEADS. Uh, we reviewed the bills, totaled seventy-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and they were approved by committee members. Uh, Chief Kidwell went over stats for December. Uh, Patrol handled four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifteen calls in the month, there were ninety-five adult arrests and one juvenile arrest. There were nineteen weapons recovered and taken off the streets, and officers handled seventy-seven accidents and wrote three-hundred-and-fifty-two tickets. A few year-end stats for the Police Department, for the year, the Police Department handled six-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three calls for service. They made one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one arrests and twenty-five juvenile arrests. Between KMEG and Patrol, they took a hundred-and-thirty-four weapons off the street in 2024. They handled a thousand-four accidents in the past twelve months, and they had, we had three homicides in the City of Kankakee, and all three of those have been solved. Uh, Chief Kidwell went over the stats for each individual ward and answered questions for committee members. On Fire Department, uh, Chief LaRoche and Deputy Chief Hyde were present for the Fire Department. Uh, they're currently staffed at forty-nine personnel and budgeted for fifty-one. Three officers are all injured and one's on administrative leave. We reviewed the bills for the month, totaling eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Uh, the largest expense was camp down, which we always, always is, thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, and twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two for EMS billing, seventeen thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars for apparatus repair, and forty-seven hundred dollars and sixty-nine, four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars for fuel. Uh, the bills were reviewed and approved by unanimous roll call vote. The department handled seven-hundred-and-ten calls for December, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine of those were medical calls. The Fire Department responded to fourteen calls outside the city limits to assist other fire departments, and the department ended up the year with six-hundred more calls than they did in 2023. Uh, they responded to one fire, structure fire, and the five-hundred block of Indian Union, a total of two-five thousand dollars, and there was another small debt fire with only about five-hundred dollars in damage. Uh, some year-end stats for the Fire Department, they were very busy also, just like police. They responded to twenty-seven fires in the city, total loss of seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, nine-hundred dollars. Uh, Fire Personnel responded to forty-nine hundred EMS calls during the year, and Fire Billing collected twenty-one thousand, five-hundred dollars for the year, and EMS Billing collected three-million-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. Uh, there's no need for an executive session, and a Public Safety Committee was adjourned at 6:10 PM.
Thank you, Alderman. Next is item 10, Report of Officers, item 10A.
City of Kankakee Bills in the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there a motion to approve, approve the Report of Officers for City of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the Report of Officers, let's pay the bills in the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, thirteen dollars, eighty-six cents.
We have a motion from Alderman Nivares, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for the City of Kankakee? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The city bills for ESU are approved. Next is unfinished business, we have none tonight. Uh, I do want to make a note, uh, we had on the last meeting, we had the first reading for the QT final plat, uh, there's still some internal, um, review that is happening to make sure that's all done properly, and they've got to get a few things done, so we didn't want to rush that, we expect that. Our goal is that the next City Council meeting in February, we'll have the second and final reading of that plat, uh, so we just, that's why you don't see that on your agenda tonight. Next is item 12, new business, item 12A.
Ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the City of Kankakee and Environmental Services, um, Public Works Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Okay. Uh, this is a, um, I'll defer to Mr. Lopez, I think we called about three different names, but if you could explain this piece of equipment?
So this piece of equipment's a stand-up lawnmower, and it has, uh, two, three attachments, it's got a, a mowing, mowing deck, a blade, and a broom. Um, we, we don't use it, uh, the lawnmower wouldn't, uh, keep up for what we mow, um, and we use a, a different piece of equipment downtown that has a, a more powerful broom when we do sidewalks, so it's just something we haven't been used, we haven't used in a long time.
So this is the surplus, and then you're going to see later on in motions and resolutions of what we're looking to do with this, uh, piece of equipment there, so, uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for this ordinance to pass tonight?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderman Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Alderman Cobb's, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 35929 to Baron Hewitt Oil, check 35942 to Gordon Electric Supply, check 35949 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, check 35954 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, check 35967 to Pigish Engineering, and check 35969 to PSI Construction LLC to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The city bills for ESU are approved. Next is unfinished business, we have none tonight. Uh, I do want to make a note, uh, we had on the last meeting, we had the first reading for the QT final plat, uh, there's still some internal, um, review that is happening to make sure that's all done properly, and they've got to get a few things done, so we didn't want to rush that, we expect that. Our goal is that the next City Council meeting in February, we'll have the second and final reading of that plat, uh, so we just, that's why you don't see that on your agenda tonight. Next is item 12, new business, item 12A.
Ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the City of Kankakee and the Kankakee Fire Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Okay. Um, Chief LaRoche had to step out, but this is some books, if I remember correctly, and some other things that are just outdated, and so we're just surplusing those. Is there a motion to, uh, suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance tonight? So move. I heard a motion from Alderman Osinga, a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12B.
Ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the City of Kankakee and the Kankakee Fire Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Okay. Um, Chief LaRoche had to step out, but this is some books, if I remember correctly, and some other things that are just outdated, and so we're just surplusing those. Is there a motion to, uh, suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance tonight? So move. I heard a motion from Alderman Osinga, a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage? So move. We have a motion from Alderman Tally, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Alderman Johnson, is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
12 i's, 0 n's.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading that would allow for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga, a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
12 i's, 0 n's.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading that would allow for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
12 i's, 0 n's.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
11 i's, 0 n's.
Ordinance is approved. We have no appointments tonight. We'll move on to Item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the exchange of government surplus property.
So going back to the surplus of the, for Environmental Services Public Works, we had this lawnmower that was going to be, we figured it had about a market value of about $8,500. There was an arrangement made with the County of Kankakee to sell that to them. We a lot of times do that with other governmental entities. But then in some discussions and talking, they have a used Chevy Tahoe that it was basically probably a former squad car, I believe. It's a 2020 that's in really good shape, and instead of them paying money, we talked about doing a swap of the lawnmower, exchange for a squad car. What this does allow is DPW is in need of pickup trucks down within the personnel. Mr. Lopez is going to, that is a city-owned vehicle that he drives. He's going to push that down into DPW for their use, and then he would end up driving that Tahoe going forward. That would prevent us from having to buy a brand-new pickup truck in this going forward. So we figured it was, well, it's a used vehicle, it's a pretty good trade. They get what they need, we get something we need, and we don't have to buy a pickup truck this year for the personnel. As you saw from his report earlier to ESU with a lot of their equipment, there's probably a need for more pickup trucks and things like that, but this is a way we can accommodate at least one of those items without having to expend catch each, each direction. So, so this is a resolution accepting that, authorizing the exchange of the government surplus property. So is there a motion for the approval of this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Who was the second? Second from Alderman Nivares. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivares.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
12 i's, 0 n's.
Resolution is approved. We have no need for an executive session tonight.
Yay.
So we will now move on to City Council member comments. Alderman Jones.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to extend a big thank you. I'm really proud of our city. We, you know, we had a couple of young men that passed on through the gun violence, and we had the funerals and the repass, and I want to really extend a big thank you to the county, the state, and, and our, the local KPD who came out and really, really, really did a wonderful, phenomenal job over the weekends protecting the community and the constituents in the community. I just truly want to thank y'all, you know, through it all, through all of the, all the, all the bad that went with it. It was a great weekend. Everybody was safe, even though, you know, you have some setbacks, but on behalf of the families, as well as being an Alderman, I was real proud that my city stepped up. You know, we went beyond the boundaries of what we do to make sure not only was Kankakee safe, but, you know, Sun River Terrace, Hopkins Park vicinity, and I was real proud of that through it all. So I like that collaboration. Also, I want to be in prayer. I just heard tonight that our engineer is, our city engineers went through some things. We're going to pray God will heal his body and bring him back 100%. And I know it's been cold weather, so I'm commending everybody that I'm watching, some of us out there today, and it's rough, but I want to commend all of our, all of the people that work for us, that are doing a tremendous job. I'm out there watching all the time, but from, from DPW all the way to all of the people that work within the departments, and it's a lot that goes on, even trying to fight through the snow. And I thank you for the job that y'all are doing over in the seven. We don't always say it, and, but we really commend you. It's rough. It is rough right now, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who does a good job for the city, and I appreciate it. That's it.
Any other Alderman comments? Alderman Cobb's.
Thank you, Mayor. Economic Development will be here in the City Council Chamos this Thursday, 5:30. Looking forward to it. Fool didn't get cold.
Is there any department head comments?
See the man going there?
Okay. Seeing none. Mayor's comments? I don't have any. I think everybody wants to go home, get into, get into a warm house, get out of this cold.